Gives me great pleasure to call to order the Southern Berkshire Regional School District. School Committee number one thousand six hundred and fifty. The agenda has amended on June thirteenth. Okay, uh, number two, the executive session, we are postponing, right? Okay, there's work ongoing and we will wait for that. All right, um, approval of school committee minutes sixteen forty-nine as attached. Um, I'll take a motion to approve and then.
So moved.
Okay, that was Carl.
Art.
Art, can we have a second on that?
What's, what are we doing?
Approving the minutes, girl. The school committee minutes.
Oh, I, I have only one comment.
Yeah, but we don't have, Carl, we don't have a second yet.
Oh, oh, second.
All right, Kyle seconded, all right, so now I will take comments. Carl, you wanna start?
Well, on, on item sixteen, executive session, I mean, there's an internal inconsistency there, roll call, vote call Stewart, yes, I most certainly did not vote yes. And below, i- 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 there's even a note as to why I didn't.
Okay. Okay, so just ask if you change?
Yeah, my, well, my vote was no.
Okay.
Alrighty, so just wanna get that page. All right. Okay. Alrighty, um, anyone else have any corrections, changes, et cetera? All right, I have a couple. Um.
Uh, this, this is yes.
Um. On page three, under chairman's report. Um, on num- uh, chairman's report, second item, the culinary students will be responsible for planning as well as presenting and serving dinner at the meeting. And then, the next item, at the rotary luncheon, made a strong, I want to insert positive impression, because that's what I said. And after, well dressed and seriously, I on added, seriously engaged, because I did say how impressed people were with that. Um, at the bottom of page three, Carl Stewart inquired about the guidance. The next to the last line, I think Carl, the way you put it was, Carl Stewart suggested that it appears there is a reluctance on the part of the administration.
I think that's fair.
Okay. Alrighty. Um. And then, back at the top of page three, uh, when Lucy Prashker was speaking about the regional planning board, that first paragraph, uh, the second paragraph confirmed that the regional agreement will, I inserted, need to be approved, need to be approved by the eight towns in order for it to go into effect. So, that needs to be added. And that was it for me. Seeing no other comments, I will take a roll call vote on approving the minutes. I'll start Jim.
Yes.
Kyle?
Yes.
Carl?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Yes.
Oh, David, I couldn't see David, okay, Art.
Yes.
Kim, Sarah, and I'm a yes, okay, so it's unanimously.
No, she, she.
What?
It's, it's abstained.
She's, she abstained, oh, you abstained, sorry about that.
She wasn't here.
You won, that's a good reason, okay. So therefore, eight yes, one abstained. Alrighty, do we have any miscellaneous correspondence?
We do not.
All right, do we have a student representative report?
Uh, no representatives at this point in the year, um, but we do have a student spotlight.
Wonderful. So let's move on to the student spotlight.
Julie, did you wanna introduce it, seeing Mr. Miller isn't here and you thought this was.
Sure.
Talk about our, our trip the other night.
What night of the week was that?
Tuesday?
Was that Tuesday night?
Maybe.
All right.
I believe it might have been Tuesday. Um, we were invited to, um, NMC kindergarten, was having a gathering to celebrate their, uh, year, uh, learning about beavers. And so we went to the public library and they had displays of the research they had done and the outings they had gone on and they had all, the, um, received a stuffed beaver that they cared for through the year and learned about how they survive and the homes they build and, and all these wonderful things. And then they kept journals and they created, um, fictional stories about their beaver and it, it was wonderful. So Lynn Webster had written a grant to get the money to do all this. And then, she showed this video that night of the kids taking turns reading parts of a nonfiction book they had written. Okay, there it is, this is kindergarten, just kindergarten. So, when she was done sharing the video, I said, oh, please send this, because this would be perfect. School committee would love to see this wonderful video of the kids taking turns reading their class-made nonfiction book about beavers. And the cutest part of it.
Oh, beavers.
I'm Miss Webster's class. Beavers have twenty teeth.
And four dimwits.
But they have iron in their teeth.
They eat cat cats and water lumps and frills.
They never eat meat.
Beavers go down.
They're the partner of the living.
And they're sexy and they're cute.
Beavers love to get into their lodge.
It has an underwater entrance.
It has a little dry place inside.
Beavers are born with tails and teeth.
They can have between twenty and sixty.
But babies do not find their mother.
They remember that they're parents until they're two years old.
Maybe beavers are called chicks.
Beavers have webbed feet, are very good swimmers.
If the babies get tired, they can lie on the mother's back.
A beaver's predators are wolves, eagles, and foxes.
Beavers make punches to escape from predators.
Bobcats, owls, and coyotes are also predators.
Beavers build their homes in water to be safe.
Humans can also be predators.
A long time ago, humans hunted beavers.
They made hats and coats out of their fur.
Beavers!
So the cutest part of the whole day was watching them get excited to hear their friend and point out which one was the voiceover of the video, so they were so excited, like, they'd watched it seven times prior, but that wasn't enough, they were still just as excited, yeah.
It's actually early K in Ked, right? Early kindergarten and kindergarten switchers class?
Just, no, kindergarten, that's correct.
Anyone else with a comment? I'd like to say, I am really impressed and the fact that, first of all, that these kids are using words like predator correctly, it's in their vocabulary. Also, some of the art there is way beyond that of a kindergarten.
They really focused on the details.
But it's truly impressive.
It was in, in-depth study, there's no question about it, in-depth.
Yeah, and they will never forget, beavers.
Oh, they never forget beavers, absolutely not.
No, but, I mean, they really should be proud of this project.
They were very proud of their project, they were. And so what was nice was all the different displays. There was a cardboard display where there were photographs of different things they had gone, different field trips they had gone on, um. And then she would have quotes from the kids about things. So Beth has on her phone some of her favorite quotes, one of the kids, you know, wrote, um, beavers have oil in their fur, so their fur won't get wet, you know, um, I took my beaver to the library, but it was very cute, because Lynn had made sure that each kid had a representation on this display of a sentence they had written. So it was nice, that was awesome.
I, I'm not speaking for the whole school committee, but please relay, um, that we were truly, that I, and I'm sure others, truly impressed by this work.
Yes, I will. I will.
And also, that this is another example of, um, a teacher following belief and going, getting, uh, going and obtaining a grant.
Yes.
And having these students have a completely unique experience.
Right.
And multidisciplinary.
Very multidisciplinary, and every year she does a different animal. So, last year it was.
Skunks? Is that what she said?
Skunks.
Look at me, remembering.
So it's after that, last year it was skunks.
My son was otters.
Same.
Okay, so this has been going on for a while.
Otters. This has been going on for a while. I can't remember my, uh, cause my son was Miss Lynn's first class there.
So, her, her goal is to expose them to local wildlife. She, her point was that children come to kindergarten generally knowing like a ton about dinosaurs.
Right.
But they have no idea the animals that live in their backyard.
Which is great, I mean, really complimented.
Yeah, I will pass that on.
Yes, thank you so much. Um, public comment?
I don't think we have any public.
Don't all be that, yep, all right.
That's nice.
All right, business manager's report.
Nothing for this evening.
Nothing for this evening. Um, business with district member towns, update on regional school, I don't see Lucy there. Um. Okay, chairman's report, so I have just a few things to bring up. Um, one, you received, uh, the information from Beth about how we are holding the last community conversation of the year on the twentieth. We did not vote as a school committee for this. Um, it will be, unfortunately Nancy's not here, but it will be something that we'll do. Right now, it is listed in order to cover ourselves, Carl. It is listed as the superintendent's conversation with the community with members of the school committee. So it is not listed as our, um, s- our sponsoring it. Um, we, we can make that decision later on when this comes up. That's, uh, number one on my list. Um, do you want, should we go through the agenda for the twentieth now or wait till later on the subcommittees?
I think you probably, I don't, it's up to you guys, uh.
Okay, in that case, what we anticip- just kidding, what we anticipate is the following. The, um, regional planning board, w- we know that Lucy Prashker and Jake Everwine will be there. There will probably be other members of, of the regional planning board. Lucy has asked, so that we keep it strictly okay, that we open with opening it as a regional planning board meeting and a school committee meeting, cause Beth's already listed it that way. So, I will open the school committee, Lucy will open the regional planning board. She wants to be sure, which makes total sense, that between those in person in the tack pack and those on Zoom, this way we're covered to not have a violation of having quarums of either subcommittees or the full committee. So by opening it in that way, we will be covered and we will do the same thing for the school committee. Uh, the plan is based on the feedback we received from the last community conversation. It was a gr- people really appreciated the approach of getting answers and, um, requested that it be really a Q and A type of session. So, the objective will be, now that the finance committee has reported out an approval of the work they did and the finance committee's work was approved by the full regional planning board, there will be information that can be presented, but we really want to encourage people to come. Because we still, any one of your networks, just have people come, because this is what they've been asking for. This is the perfect opportunity before summer and all, to get all of the necessary information that exists. Additionally, this is where I do my mea culpa, the, um, education subcommittee met yesterday and presented a report. Um, I am on that committee, however, I also had the reorganization meeting of the Sheffield Cultural Council Board that I'm on. So, I started there, because the new members were being introduced, we were being reorganized. And then I came to the education committee meeting. What happened was, I should have just followed Jim's lead, but I had never seen that beyond the report, there was a statement that the education committee is supporting the merger of the two districts. Um.
Well, based on the report.
Based on the report. Based on the report. I knew, you know, it was a case of, it, it, there were not gonna be changes. And I felt that working and playing well with others and all, I thought we were voting on the report. That was the information I had received. I did not realize, and I don't know if there are guidelines for this, the education committee at five thirty, at twelve thirty-six yesterday, received the updated report for the five thirty meeting. So I did not know that in it, there was a paragraph that based on this report, they were endorsing the merger. I voted yes. I will not comment on the quality of the report, but I voted yes on the report. It turned out that I had voted yes on merger. I got a phone call and I said, the person who called me said, do you know what you voted for, basically? I said, yeah, the report's innocuous, it's whatever, there's nothing, you know, I could have done this three and a half years ago. I even said, Carl, when you and I met with Steve Bannon and Rich Dohany, we, almost everything on that report, we talked about doing in collaborative ways. There was nothing great there. I went a bit crazy and immediately, I'm crazy, wrote and said, I need my vote to be changed to a no. Um, it, there, there was nothing before twelve thirty-six yesterday and truthfully, I was not glued to my email, as I had other things to deal with and a meeting, et cetera. So I have requested that my vote be changed, it will not make a difference in the outcome, but I, if you hear anything, I just want you to be aware of the fact, mea culpa. I did vote yes, but not on what I thought I was voting on. Carl?
Can you, uh, do you recall or can you paraphrase that, what the motion was that you, that, that the, that subcommittee voted on?
The motion was to accept the report.
Accept the report, but not, but, but not, so it wasn't, cause it sounded from your introduction as if what the subcommittee was voting on was, uh, approval or disapproval of the merger, but it wa- is that correct?
What happened was, there was, and Jim probably can explain it, because I came in.
Yeah.
What happened was, at some point, at the end, originally it seems it was at the end of the report, they'd put in that based on this report, they are recommending merger.
They meaning the education.
The education subcommittee. But that was not clear from the highlights given at twelve thirty-six with this new report, which is only five hours before meeting, and it was not clear, and I take the responsibility of having gone to the Sheffield Cultural Council, so maybe I would have picked this up.
But, uh, so, but my, my, well, I perhaps didn't phrase it precisely enough. If somebody not on that education subcommittee were to read the motion, which was carried, which was carried, would, would that person, that, that, you know, fictitious person, understand that you were approving, that the education subcommittee was approving the report, rather than approving the merger, is it clear?
No.
Beth shakes her head no, it isn't clear.
No.
So what are we doing?
No, it is clear what the motion was, it's very clear.
Okay, Jim first.
Yeah?
Uh, and I have to say, I'm also in a negative about the attendance and such, but I was voting last night. So it wasn't even a well-attended meeting of the committee. But in any case, it was presented as kind of a, um, to my way of thinking, the culmination of Jake's work, um, investigating, um, possible advantages, educational advantages of, of combining the two districts. There was a sentence, I, in the, at the end of the, of the end of it, or somewhere on the, the, on the, the written report, you know, the one that was on the screen, it said, therefore the committee recommends merger to the, to the whole regional school committee, but that was never voiced. In my, in my recollection, it was just, when the vote was called, it was called basically to accept Jake's report and, um, the chairperson's name is Deb.
Deb, yes.
That presentation of Jake's report.
And what, when.
Is that, is that Debbie, is that Debbie Phillips?
Yes, what went up on the screen, there's, you know, for, this is all Zoom meaning, what went up on the screen were, was just a chart, which you can find on atowns.org. Um, a s- a screenshot of, these are the benefits of, um, education with a larger group, these are some questions we have. So the, the whole, now, Jim just confirmed that it really, the part of merger really was not brought up.
And we've been working on that format for some time, with the, uh, sub, as long as I've been on the education subcommittee, that format has been something that has been added to and subtracted from. And it never had anything out of the bag before we approved a merger and that. I was not aware even having looked at things, that this was going to be a recommendation about merger. I thought it was gonna be a presentation, this, we were voting, that this was our final report to present to the board as a whole.
So I, so I just have one, one more question for either Jim or for you, Butter. So, in view of the fact that there's a possibility of some confusion or misunderstanding, it seems to me that that's what it sounds like, is, is there going to be, uh, some sort of corrective or explanatory action taken at, at, at a, at a future meeting, uh, of, of, of this subcommittee? So that it's clear what the committee did and what it didn't do?
What I asked for from, from, from Lucy is whatever procedures need to take place in order to change my vote to a no, number one. Number two, that the members of the subcommittee be informed of that. Um, three, I said, um.
I'm trying to remember the.
Re- I said, I would want there to be a motion for reconsideration. Not that I think any of the votes will change, but I do think it's important that people on that committee understand this clearly, you know. There was no, there was not an understanding that this report included an endorsement from the educational perspective of a merger. So those are my requests. I, you know, got a long response from Peter Taylor, basically saying, you know, nothing about doing anything further, but I will not, you know, I'm not gonna let this go based upon the fact, I don't think you should get a final report. We spent more hours on what the tentative name should be for the new district than we spent on what people have said is supposed to be at the core of any merger, which is education. So I, I was very disappointed and, and really, Carl, what we did seven or eight years ago, we could have written that report, there was nothing there that, and even recognized, and I pointed this out it, when I responded to Peter Taylor, there was no, you, I was the only ed- well, psychologist, but people were saying things that make absolutely no sense, because they don't know programming. They don't know what superintendents have to do in that area. And they don't know the differentiation of education that we have in Southern Berkshire. And, and the things they were coming up with, not that it wasn't well-meaning, but they don't understand, because it's not their field. You know, the same way I wouldn't be litigating a situation, the, the majority of these people should not be determining how the school district should use its resources in education. Carl, and then we'll finish up on this.
Okay, I, 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 I just, you, you weren't shocked, were you, by the fact that people were saying things that didn't make any sense?
No.
Okay, cause that isn't, that shouldn't be shocking, I mean.
No. No, no.
Uh, no, Carl.
No, but I, I have a, a unrelated question on your report. And, and this, this is, it's because I, I perhaps didn't read something that I should have read. How do people, other than people in the school, that is, the school committee and other, and other people affiliated with the school, but how do people, uh, i- i- in, in the community at large, know, one, that this meeting is taking place, where it's taking place, and whether it's both in person and Zoom, how do they know that?
Beth will respond to the blitz.
So we just did a media blitz today, um, and we have, we usually make a flyer. Um, and we, I sent it to all faculty and staff, all, you got, the school committee got it today, the, um, the, it went home families via the messenger system, it was posted on all of our social media accounts, it'll be put on our news feed on the website, so, um, because this is the third one. So, um, because this is the third one that we've done, I think people are kind of familiar. But the best thing always is word of mouth, so that people can have, you know, this is a tough time of year to, to give time, but people did ask for this very specifically, and I think for the first time, people are going to have an idea of what the assessment formula might look like and, you know, associated costs. And I think, I think that is something that people are very interested in. Um, and then this, this, um, educational.
So i- i- in other words, you regard it, and I, I agree, if you do regard it as well publicized, and so that anybody who is even mildly interested should know that this is taking place.
But I.
And they can attend by either in person or by Zoom.
But, yes.
I think it's very important that all of us use all of our contacts, because this is the first time we responded to the request from Lucy that there be a planning, a meeting that was planned, including the regional planning board. And I ran by Lucy a, a number of the statements in this before it was published. So the objective is to really, we want to have it well attended, because it's, it's a different, a different approach here. But it, Beth is a thousand percent right, we've got to use all of our networks. I mean, at the cultural council, all these people are very well informed, not one person there knew anything about it. So we, you know, whatever networks you have, please get the word out, because it'll obviously be our last one of the school year, okay?
And we're trying to do this one a little bit differently, we've, we've tried a couple of different methods. I, I, as an admin team, we worked with Chris Thompson today. We think that we're going to, um, do the questions real time, posting right up on the screens, or they can see them and hear, you know, and, and be able to, not the answers, we won't have time to do all that, but at least the questions will be up there and, um, we won't be able to repeat. We're gonna try to keep it to, in the be, the first one, people were a little long winded with seventy-five follow-ups, so maybe not as many people had a chance, the cards were a little difficult to maneuver last time. So we're gonna try this as, as the third shot, as a question and answer. You can get one question with maybe one follow-up, and then someone else gets a turn. Um, and we'll, we'll try to have those questions right up and visible, so everybody can see them. And then if we don't have all of the information, we'll go back and, and, um, fill in some answers and, and get that out. So that's what we're gonna try, round three, and see what's the most successful.
Okay, um, let's move on to the superintendent's report, please.
Okay, so, um, just because we're all in, um, thank you to those who were able to get here, um, for our first ever retirement celebration that we just had. And, uh, we celebrated our five retirees, Brenda Ulrich, Josephina Clay, Ba- Barnum, Martha Barnum, and Katinka Jisai. Jisai, thank you, there it is, um, which, uh, combined, uh, we celebrated a hundred and fifty-one years of service to the district um, and our students and families today, so that was a, a wonderful event. And I'm, I'm glad that we're gonna continue this tradition moving forward. We are, um, having, uh, we have applied, uh, in partnership with, um, our partner, Bard Rock, Bard Rock. Bard College, that's fine. Oh my God, wow, whatever, one of those, uh, Simon's Rock, uh, for this, uh, transcend grant. Um, and that is about, uh, rural education, innovative education, and community-based participation in what that could look like. Uh, the last stage before you are approved to be, um, to join the ten-month cohort um, and work with, uh, this team is a site visit. So we will be having a site visit here, uh, on June twenty-first and half-day on June twenty-second. Uh, and there'll be more to follow on opportunities to participate if you're interested. Um, we are currently writing our, um, in conjunction with the school committee, our end-of-year newsletter. So that's one that'll be going to all homes, this is the first time we've done this, um, newsletter. So, uh, we're, it's due tomorrow, no pressure. So we're all writing our articles right now, I mean, not right now, but soon. Um, and, uh, I'm also working on my article for the Sheffield Times, so lots of writing. Um, and because I'm, uh, and I'm sure they'll agree, somewhat of a slave driver, our first, uh, administrative retreat is the Friday after school gets out, no rest for the weary. Um, so, uh, we'll be starting planning for the next year on six twenty-three. So I understand my reputation and wear it as a badge of honor. Also, from Lynette today, she was, um, very, she was reminding me that the MASSS/MASC conference dates have been set, so they are November Wednesday, November eighth through Friday, November tenth. The early bird registration is due to her by July fifteenth. She's not so worried about whether or not you think you can come and get into the conference, we, we can probably, but she does worry about the availability of the hotel. So if you know that you are going to attend as a school committee member, just please write to her and let her know. She will send you, um, a, a reminder email to be thinking about if, if you can join us on that time.
Carl, I think you.
I, I, I have a question about that, but you, but you can finish your report and then I'll ask.
Oh, thank you.
Sure, um, so I will, um, I mean, I just, also, I, and I hope you all got this in your, um, uh, as school committee members, if you're on the Massachusetts list, but it lists other events that you might. There's learning lunches, there's a summer institute. Um, the big one between the, the superintendent's association and the school committee is the November one, but there's other events that you might be interested in, so, um, I can, if you haven't seen it, um, there's professional development online, you don't have to go anywhere. Uh, so I just thought that you might be interested in, in taking a look at some of those as well.
My, my question about the, the, uh, MASC, is it combined MASSS/MASC conference in November? So is there, uh, I, I don't think it's imposed by MASC, but is, is this district setting the number that it can send?
No, we, we, we are prepared to send as many who.
So if all ten want to go, the, the district is prepared to support that?
That's correct.
Okay.
And if you can only do two of the three days, please consider it. I mean, I, I know those of us.
Even if you can only do one.
Right, have gone, it's.
It's one day short this year.
Yes, no Saturday, right, no, it's Wednesday through Friday. Um, there's so much that you learn from this. And as a tangential, um, note, Dorothy Presser, who did our training last week, which I really hope you will, uh, give approval when I introduce it, um, that I can write a thank you note on behalf of all of us to Dorothy. She really, and Liz Lefon, really appreciated working with us. And she's now sent me material that I will forward to you. So, and that connection, I mean, those people like Dorothy and Liz have been there for decades of work. And if you haven't gone, I highly recommend it.
Can I, can I just add a quick, very brief comment about it? I think I ju-, I think this past November, I just attended my sixth co-, uh, annual conference. And I suggest to anybody, no matter how much you think you know about school governance and related issues, it, it is a very valuable experience, and they have many panels. How, how many panels, fifteen a day or so?
Yes, oh, more than that, because I think it's during any session, there are like seven or so, right.
Six or seven going, yeah, so it's more, it's twenty a day or something like that. And it's almost impossible not to find a few panels during the course of those two or three days that will give you greater insight, more knowledge, be, be, be a better, better school committee members. And Bonnie's been to a lot, and I think Dennis has been to quite a few.
Yeah.
Right?
I think he outdoes us all.
Really?
And I was, but I think you also learn things that are applicable in any other business organization you're involved in or anything else. It's, 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 it's good. Okay, we're okay with that?
We are.
All right, moving on, Julie.
I have no report to see.
Okay, Sandy.
So on the heels of the end of the school year, and then Beth setting up, uh, administrative retreat on the twenty-third. Summer program starts on the twenty-sixth, so we're just moving right on through.
Yeah.
Um, kindergarten and pre-kindergarten screenings are also on June twenty-third, so there's going to be a lot happening here. Summer program runs from June twenty-sixth to July twenty-seventh, Monday through Thursday. Um, I just did finish my article for the newsletter.
You did?
I have it on, I was sitting here.
I'll say it.
Um, so that will, that information is in there, and I mentioned last time that, um, United Way of Mass Bay is also going to be providing us with some funds again to support our summer step-up program for children in grades kindergarten through grade three, and that's in partnership with Flying Cloud Institute. So those things are all happening, and I do want to mention that, uh, Julie and I were just, I've been talking and collaborating, and we were able to talk to Albert Usad, who's from the Collaborative for Educational Services, and he's going to offer, um, a training this summer, a course. Uh, everybody who is education has to get fifteen professional development points in English lan- language learning to renew their licenses, and he's going to be offering a course asynchronous, um, for the summer, and it's going to be part of our Title III grant, so there won't be any charge for that. So people will be able to take that free of charge, which is typically a cost that, um, teachers need to pay in order to get those credits for their licensure, so we're fortunate that that's going to be happening the last week of July. In addition to the wonderful other things she has planned, that she'll tell you about another time. And that's it.
Any questions?
How long does summer school build up?
July twenty-seventh, it's five weeks, Monday through Thursday.
Um, I forgot one thing, I ran into John Weinstein last weekend, and we have slots, a lot more, he, he just had approval for like twenty-something slots for that, remember the, like, kids who did from middle school? That could be rising ninth, tenth, or eleventh graders. And I remember Artie reporting back that the students who went last summer really appreciated it. It, it costs three thousand dollars per student, but with the grant, it costs nothing. So it's still open, um, I don't know how we're pushing it. The kids get to do, do col-, on-campus college work, they live on campus, supervised, obviously. And, um, it won't cost a cent, because he just received notice that I think it's twenty-five more slots are available.
Well, that means he, that some filled and he asked for more. So we, we originally had at least five, so.
This is at.
It's with our.
At Sonvins Rock is part of the program, and the students will do everything, I mean, you can just check online, so.
We've, we've sent it, he's, we've sent it multiple times, and, and we had our early college coordinator actually talk about it with.
Okay, great.
Students, so.
Okay, um, moving on to new business, um, update on select energy power purchase?
So I, I just will say, we're not, we're not all the way there, um, but we're, we're incredibly close. So, um, I think this will tie in with the, uh, twelve C agenda item. And they would appreciate it if we had a meeting at the end of June, um, to, uh, wrap that up as well as, um, anything else that the committee might have.
Okay. Guidance and college report.
Yep. Um, so that I'm going to move and let, um, we might need two seats, so.
I'll get out of the way.
Uh, and we will let Mr.
Just the end of that.
Mr. Carpenter and.
Ooh.
Mr. Randall join us at the table, and thank God for that fan, okay? Okay. Yeah.
You could have the cocktail seat.
Chairman, welcome.
Thank you, thank you, so I, I appreciate, uh, you having us to, uh, talk a little bit about, uh, the college report and also guidance. Um, Lou's gonna take you through some of the documents that we shared with you and talk a little bit about our process, um, on how we help our students get prepared for the future, um, whether it be college, joining the workforce, or, um, uh, enlisting in the military. Good evening, I'm Lou Randall, for those of you who don't know me, I'm the ten through twelve school counselor. Mr. Carpenter asked me to put together some information, and he compiled it here with his handy, uh, outline for you, for your viewing ease. If you would look at page one, the post-secondary plans. So this year we had forty-six students graduated. And we break it down, um, on our profile, sixty-seven percent of the class going to four-year colleges, nine percent two-year, two percent tech trade, two percent military, seventeen percent indicated, uh, going right into the workforce, and then two percent, um, prep school, foreign, and it's two percent, two percent represents, um, a student going to school in Europe. And for your, well, you can peruse this at your, your leisure, but this was, um, pages two to five was from, uh, our graduation pamphlet, and it shows students that, um, wanted their na-, we had one opt out, but, uh, typically the students are fine with having their name and where they plan to attend college published. Oh, yeah. So six and seven, um, listing the colleges that the class twenty-three were accepted into, and as published in the graduation pamphlet. Page eight, uh, is information that, uh, was compiled on Naviance. And the way this is done is when a student is accepted into a college, they indicate, um, you know, accepted, and, or most, uh, I would say most students came in and talked to me, um, and then I would, uh, indicate their acceptances. So if you look, um, there were a hundred and sixty-two acceptances with a hundred and sixty-four colleges represented. And remember, this is the information that either the student, uh, put in or, or I did at their direction. Pages nine through nineteen, um, is also information from Naviance. And the names of the, the students have been redacted, but, um, it lists the colleges that they applied to. And then also, um, on Naviance, the acceptances are also, um, indicated in a report.
Just for that one, uh, it's clustered by student. So hypothetically, you know, the first eight could be from the same student, that they applied to those eight schools. Um, we took the names out, um, so that we could show this with others and not, um, shed kid's name based on the schools they applied to.
Sure.
Just, just a question, should I assume?
Just, just a question, should I assume that, that, just looking at the numbers here that you, that you're actually showing us, that, that less than half of the applicants got accepted?
Um, based on
A hundred and sixty-two out of the three ninety-five?
Yeah.
Is that fairly normal?
Yeah, yeah, we, I mean, there's a lot of students who, who apply to, you know, their dream school and things like that, and so there's every year we have kids that apply to some schools that they know it reaches for them, but they're hoping to get in or get waitlisted.
Is it very much year, year through year?
I mean, last year
I've never seen the number before.
Yeah, last year I think it was, um, less, but I think it was less because it was fewer overall schools that kids applied to. I mean, this class, um, you know, I mean, I'm not gonna speak for Lou, but that, I was proud of the fact that a lot of them applied to schools that they knew were long shots, but they wanted to give it a chance, and just to see, um, and in some cases, we had a couple of kids, uh, waitlisted um, at different places, and to lose credit, he spent a whole lot of time on the phone with one institution in particular, um, in the hopes of convincing them to, um, admit a couple of our students, which they eventually did, so, um, you know, that, that turned out to be great, because in both cases, kids thought they were long shots, they, they weren't sure they could, um, get into those, and that's one of the things we've been pushing is that, you know, shoot for the stars, like, it's an application, and if they're applying through Common App, you know, it, it doesn't cost them all that much money, and so, you know, trying to get kids to, to just see what happens when they apply to them.
Carl?
Yeah, uh, two, two things, one, I, I think that I heard Dennis say, uh, less than half of the applicants were accepted, but that's not accurate. Less than half of the applications resulted in acceptance.
Yes.
Not less than half of the applicants, because, uh, I mean, the numbers are there, sixty-seven percent, two-thirds of the class is going, so it's, so it's not less than half, it's two-thirds. Um, but, and, and my second question is unreali- my, 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 that was just a point that I wanted to make sure that the record is clear on that. But under the entry, delivery type, CA means common application, is that correct?
Yes, so Common App is how most colleges are, you know, accepting the applications. Um, there's, of course, there's direct application, um, Common App. It has its advantages, and there's some areas of concern, but, you know, with that said, uh, this year, I think I had maybe, so I, I wanted the students to have a Common App account beforehand, and I s- I sent out an email with a link, and I said, you know, please have this, um, ready for the fall. But when they came in, I think maybe three of the students had it, so I would call them down individually and get them set up with their Common App account, and, um, then you have to, to link it to Naviance, and that's how, uh, they get their letters of recommendation and so forth.
So, uh, the, the, can I ask one more question?
Sure.
Okay, the next column, uh, I, can you explain, when it says transcript, transcript, sorry, and the majority of them are, uh, have the notation no request?
Just because through the Naviance platform.
So if, if you, if you use the Naviance platform?
We'd have to check off that they sent their, um, that they had requested their transcript to go.
Right.
Which we do anyway, so we don't necessarily go through for every single one and, and click on, it's just a function in Naviance.
Okay, so that's normal.
Yeah, yeah.
And if we looked at the record of some other school, let's say Berkshire Hills or Mount Greylock, we'd see a similar distribution in all likelihood?
I, I would think so, unless they really have someone who has the time to go through and
Uh-huh.
and check off that box for every single application.
So, but this has become the, the common, the more, most common way of, of handling that application process.
Well, it depends on the school.
Oh.
I would say, so we upload, uh, the transcripts, and this year I had more colleges, li- all right, oh, let me go back, last year I had colleges contacting me directly through email typically, and asking for a transcript when it was already, um, uploaded on Naviance, so I would send it to them. This year I had more students come to me saying they need my transcript, and they, they were requesting it through the student rather than directly sending, I mean, I had a few that, um, sent me, um, an email or a link where I could upload, um, but I, I said, okay, so I, I would, uh, get the transcript to the student electronically, and then they'd come back and say, oh, Mr. Randall, you know, they, they accepted my transcript, and I thought that was kind of odd, but, um, so that's, you know, some of the technology, it's there, but some of this, I would say, this past year, a lot of schools, for, for whatever reason, they weren't using it, um, and they were going directly to the student.
Mm-hmm.
That's odd, and then to, to answer your question, there are some districts use different platforms. Um, Naviance is a big one, and the reason why we chose it was it houses a lot of information, so some of the stuff we're doing with MyCap plans, it, it, that platform makes it so much easier, um, it's also connected to one of the databases called Power School, so most Power School, um, users, districts, they use, uh, Naviance, there are a couple other ones, um, and it reads in different formats and things like that, but we found Naviance to be the best one for us.
And, and have you found, with your permission, Bonnie, have you found that the students are satisfied, seem to be satisfied with the process?
I think so, I think one of the things that, um, as the students get more used to Naviance, just, uh, cataloging a lot of their information is a lot easier, so we've been using it long enough now that kids know, I'm gonna have to get my recommendations from staff here, from outside sources, I'm gonna have to get it into Naviance to make the process easier, um, when we first started using it, it was a little more clunky because kids hadn't used it before. So they were used to kind of the old-school way of, I'd get my recommendation from you, and then I would package it up and send it off in my, um, packet to the school.
Right.
Um, so, and now we're using Naviance a lot more, um, for different things, when the kids are younger, like, we start as early as, you know, middle school, with them starting to put in
You just answered one of my questions, Kim?
So Naviance has been around for quite a while, 'cause my daughter, who graduated in two thousand twelve in the other district, used it for the college and stuff like that, and experience with it, it's kinda, it was good, but there was a few loopholes that, or gaps that just weren't fixed, so it sounds like it's the same stuff from when, two thousand twelve, so they
Yeah, and I, I've heard from some other school counselors similar, you know.
She applied to three, heard back from two, and third college never got anything from her staff. She never heard back from, she called them, they said, we never received anything, so.
Wow.
I don't know if it was
It wasn't our district.
No, it wasn't our district, it was the other district.
Um, I have a couple of questions, one, I'm really happy to hear that we're going to the lower grades and thinking that way, and I think Beth saw that when she was interviewing the kindergartners, you heard her graduation speech, you know, they now talk about, they're going to college.
Yeah, that's, and that's one of the things that, you know, is covered in page twenty and twenty-one and twenty-two. Um, we put a grant in, um, two years ago, uh, for MyCap plans, and put a MyCap team together with administrators, teachers, uh, both guidance counselors, uh, Lou and Dawn, and basically, this year we spent a lot of our time, uh, and really, you know, end of summer into the fall, of building, um, a complete eighth grade and almost complete tenth grade plan, and the goal for next year is to get sixth and seventh grade, we did some activities with them, but not formal enough for us to list it out to you, but the goal is six, seven, um, nine, eleven, twelve we're less, um, concerned about, we'll eventually get there, because we do so much with the twelfth graders already in Naviance that their MyCap plan is kind of filling out naturally based on what their interests are.
Can you explain, like, in a sentence or so, MyCap?
So, uh, MyCap is the, uh, my career in academic plan, so the state's been pushing the idea of kids starting to think about it, and so for most of the kids, we start with an interest inventory, trying to connect their passions to what their future's gonna look like, um, and then they gotta get career clusters.
And you can do that as part of the program in middle school.
Yeah, yeah, and again, so even in sixth and seventh grade, we start that process a little bit, and again, we just need to formalize sort of the lesson plans. Like, in eighth grade, when you look at that one, we kind of used academic time periods to kind of, um, go through some of the things. One of the coolest ones we did, we did a March Madness, um, project where, uh, they took the brackets, 'cause a lot of the kids follow the col- NCAA tournament, and, uh, kids picked a different college from that group, made a poster, and then presented it, and so for a lot of kids, some of those small Division One colleges, they haven't even heard of. Um, and so it was really interesting to see, and then some of the kids who got, you know, bigger universities who went really far, like, the kid who had UConn was really proud that they had the national champion, but again, most kids have heard of the University of Connecticut, so, you know, like, their information, you saw a lot of kids nodding, and then there were other kids who would get real small schools, who were like, where is that, and part of that was sharing, the state it was in, the enrollment, things like that. And then in tenth grade, uh, Lou put together, uh, that one, um, with our team, and, and that one, we pushed into advisory quite a bit to do summer lessons, and we also, um, one of the things that really important from MyCap is involving the entire staff, so it's not just the belief that this is guidance's responsibility, so we tried to get as many teachers involved, you could see in the tenth grade one, uh, English and history teachers were really great about doing some of the lessons, um, and really, that was the vision we had, which I was really happy about, that it didn't really just fall on, um, you know, the, the high school administration and, and Lou to kind of push these out. We got a lot of help from a lot of the, the staff who bought into the idea, like, these things are really important, like, I, they were happy to give up class time in order to go over, and some of it tied directly to, like, in English, we talked about interviewing skills, and so they really tied it to some of the work that they had done around, um, what are essential questions you ask people and things like that, so, um, it, it dovetailed nicely.
Okay, so I have a few quick ones, we have, um, I was really happy to see one acceptance at GW, how did she happen to apply there? Do you know?
Let me just, uh.
Iliana?
Yeah. I, I mean, I think one of the things that Lou does a really nice job with when it comes to some of the schools that kids apply to, when we figure out sort of what their interests are, you know, some of the kids already kind of know, they have their list of ten or twelve colleges, there's other kids who end up with the, um, asking for help with it and things like that, and so that's the nice thing about, about some of the programs we use in Naviance, is it kind of ties that, okay, you would like to be a, you know, physician's assistant, or you would like to be a lawyer, and you look in the clusters, and then the connection to college gives you sometimes a list of schools, and so I think for some of the kids, they found that, for other kids, um, it's just a matter of, um, you know, family influence and things like that about what a
So you don't
I think for her, it was specifically, she looked at, and Lou, correct me if I'm wrong, she had looked at a bunch of, uh, city schools, like, she was looking to, you know, um.
That, that particular student applied to a number of Ivy League schools, um, and reach schools, so to speak, um, and that was done through, um, the Common App and Naviance.
Well, I'll leave you with, I'm going back to something that Carl said for years, and one of our objectives is to help kids understand there's nothing horrible about reaching and being a little bit afraid, and, you know, going the extra distance, et cetera, um, so the other thing is, I wanna, I guess you were the one who helped, one young man who really wanted UMass Amherst and was waitlisted at graduation told me he got it off the waitlist, and he's going to UMass Amherst, and it's nice to see, we have, what do we have, five kids at UMass Amherst? Really nice.
A few of them were waitlisted, um.
So thank you for the work there, it really makes a difference, and remember, I remember when I looked up at that board, and I thought we were a Catholics district, 'cause everything said Saint Rose, so it's nice to see that, I have another question. The way this is all put into, you know, was listed at graduation, we can put the students and what they're doing in our newsletter?
Um, I, I I would assume so, because we listed in graduation, right? It's public, so I believe we can.
Yeah, because it's one of the things, again, that Carl had brought
Yeah, students deserve the right to, we get asked, uh, almost every year, to please don't put my name in for a hundred different reasons, like, each time it's been something different, and we respect that, but everybody who's put their information there was listed in the graduation pamphlet.
Right.
Anybody who went to graduation would have seen it, so I would assume it's public, a public document.
No, just it's, I'm responding again to something Carl brought up about the larger community being aware of where are, what are students doing, whether it's military, career, or college, so, yes, it'll be in our last newsletter. Okay, anyone else have a question?
Can I just add one thing, when you were talking about the student in UMass, um, you know, Lou has done a really nice job over the last couple of years of assisting the kids and the families, and, um, you know, there, there are a lot of, uh, cases where he ends up sort of, uh, assisting with, uh, you know, fast fund financial aid, assisting with finishing off the Common App, um, helping kids when they've put stuff in, and then they haven't put everything in before their application deadline, um, and he's offered to families every year in the junior class, do you wanna come in and talk about your future plans? Some families take us up on that, other families, um, you know, decline because they already have sort of a plan, but those kids still end up working closely, uh, with Lou, um, and certainly with the younger kids, um, and Dawn, you know, she starts that process of, of trying to connect their, uh, passions with what they might want to do, um, as they get closer, so that when they're in their sophomore year, you know, they're really starting to think about, you know, even ninth grade sometimes, what pathway might they wanna take? You know, if they wanna do a pathway in our, our course study book, and then really now with early college, starting those conversations about, like, if you think you're a science person, trying to, you know, get as many science classes, including early college as they can, or whatever their passion may be, so.
Mm-hmm.
Um, you know, I, I, I feel really good about kind of where we are in terms of sort of guiding the kids and trying to get them in the electives they want when possible, or talking about a plan if they can't get it one year, how they get it the next year, things like that.
And I can't offer for the whole school committee, but if there's ever something that you feel we could further assist, um, you, you know, all of us as citizens of these communities are spending twenty thousand dollars a student on educating, and part of what we have to do is say, hey, this is what we have at the end when you graduate from Mount Everett. So if we could help, I'm sure there are some of us who would be willing to do it.
We appreciate that.
All right, before, you want to closing, yes, Lou first? Yes.
A short question, on page six, the lead paragraph, uh, ends with the sentence, the single most, so you talk about uh, a number of factors determining which, where, where students attend the school, uh, of their choice, and, and, and the last sentence says, the single most important factor is the financial aid awarded by the institution.
What, what we hear from students.
Okay.
As far as
Okay, that was my question.
Where they, where they make their final decision, the vast majority of them, when we survey them after, talk about the financial package. I think for, you know, just in general, that's kind of where kids land sometimes.
So does that indicate to you that perhaps, and I, this is a question, it's not a, it's, it's not a a criticism, but that perhaps more work could be done, whether it's by the faculty, the guidance office, you, your assistant principal, people in the community, school committee members who might volunteer to do this, that, to, to talk about the, the many opportunities there are, and often unknown opportunities for financial assistance. Be- and I say that because, I mean, and I fully understand and I support the idea that not everybody should go to college, it's just not right for some people, and some people have done re- many people do really That not everybody should go to college, it's just not right for some people, and some people have done re- many people do really well. Without having gone to college, completed college, but there are certain avenues. Uh for exa- and 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 I actually can remember a few students that I've helped or given encouragement to. Uh that if, that students who have a a a thought about going to professional school, whether it's med school, law school. Architectural school, a business school, where they go as an undergraduate undergraduate really does matter. Um it's um, if you go to an Ivy League school as an undergraduate. And I don't say that that's, this is right, I don't think this is necessarily is 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 a good way for schools to look at it. But someone who goes to an Ivy League school is much more likely to get into an Ivy Law School. Or med school, or in an MBA program than if they went to Sienna College, let's say. I'm just picking something out of the air, and we we I don't think it's common knowledge that that's close to accurate, you don't agree?
No, I I mean, I think there is something to be said for that, I think one of the things that that we attempt to do. Uh and our guidance department does a really nice job, is sharing a lot of these scholarship opportunities. The local ones through the Oregon Scholarship Fund, the local ones through other organizations, some national ones. Um Lou sends out a ton of emails to the students about, have you checked this out? We give them, uh there's a website that lists a couple hundred different national scholarships. Um we've had a couple of kids here who have uh applied through Stadium System uh in Canton, Connecticut. Uh and believe it or not, the refurbishers, uh what do they call themselves? They they do like the football equipment. The Refurbishers of America give out a national scholarship that's worth, I think, four thousand dollars, a thousand dollars a year. We've had a couple of students over the last five years receive that one, um so we really do try to push that. I don't know what's going on, uh I don't uh, I don't really understand the world right now. Um but it's it's gotten harder and harder sometimes to get students to apply. I can just tell you, like I heard from uh one of the Rotary members, that they were really excited that we had so many Mount Everett students apply for their scholarships. Um and we had more than some of the other local schools, um you know, I had, I, you know. I heard from a college student who applied and got X amount of money and then was given uh double the amount of money. Um from one of the local scholarships, because they said not that many kids applied. Um and so we're pushing it out there, we actually help some of the kids finish applications. When applications for scholarships come in incomplete, uh Lou, Dawn, uh the Guidance Secretary Beth Hall, they they make phone calls home. They call the kid down to the office and say, you're missing this, this and this, cause sometimes some of these scholarships ask for individual essays, they ask for other things. So that's our goal, is to try to get kids to apply for as many scholarships as possible to bring down the cost.
Yeah, I mean, I I I think.
Carl, only cause of time.
Okay, I I won't ask it.
Okay, no, you can't, just short it.
Very quick, very quickly, uh Bonnie and I, many years ago, talked about uh. School committee members volunteering, if the school did not think it represented any kind of conflict. But helping students with the decision process, and also not to, not to. Uh step on the toes of guidance, but looking at essays, I mean, just doing things like that. And we found in a school committee of however many years ago, eight years ago, ten years ago. That a number of school committee members were willing to do that on a volunteer basis. And again, I mean, it is important to recognize the distinction between a volunteer, whether it's school committee, whether it's a member of the community, and the staff at the school. But I think that if you ask, you would find that school committee members would be willing. To volunteer their their some time to to help out, can't hurt, is my view.
Um yeah, I'd just like to say that uh I find it impressive that the last ten years, you have nearly seventy percent going to college. It's the highest in ten years, I assume that maybe some of that is the affiliation with Simon's Rock and kids taking college classes. Um I also think, you know, too, I think like maybe. Less than one percent of the country is gonna get into an Ivy League school, so I mean, like to. To take forty-six kids and have that be the expectation, I applied for myself and got into none. So, so I think that uh, but I I I I think this is impressive, and I would say congratulations in order.
Well, we appreciate that, and you know, certainly over the last couple of years, we've had, um you know, students get into Ivy League, get into. Um some other very prestigious schools, um and it's a credit to the work that the entire staff here does. Um the support of their families, uh the community, um and again, our our goal is to have kids have a plan when they leave. Um I think a lot of them are looking at all their different opportunities, and the early college part helps because some kids who didn't think that that was an option. Some of our kids who are going directly into the workforce, talk about, oh, I think I am gonna try to take a class at some point. It might not be next year, or this year coming up, it might be two years from now, but they're at least thinking about those kinda things, about what their future will bring.
Just a couple of points. I just, I just wanted to like make a couple of points before I.
Oh, okay, go ahead.
Okay, so um, we hosted a financial aid night where um we had a. Financial aid officer from FASIA, and she, she's a person in our community. Um and she offers this service for free um every year, and uh we really appreciate it. And she does, you know, a PowerPoint presentation and she has packet, and she also tells. The people that attend, if they have any questions, um they can call her, I had a couple of students. Um had some issues with it, um and. They have to, you know, go through the process with their parents, but you know, there were some technical issues that a couple of students came to. Um our office for, and um you know, either their parent called. Walked them through, or um got on the phone um right with FASIA, and. Um it it worked out, so the students, you know, taking ownership of of that aspect was was really important. And the second point I wanted to make was that um when when I speak with the students. And they tell me what they wanna do, I assure them that I'm gonna support them. Whether they choose to go to college, whether it's a four-year, a two-year. Or if they choose the military path, because we, um in our. Um job and career fair, we had um quite a a range of diversity, we had, you know. Farming, we had the military, um we had dental and and other health professionals. And and people in the community were great, um. Cosmetologists and so forth, um and you know, the the student that. Wants to go right into the workforce, um you know, again, with the my cap, it's also. About their uh career readiness, um so. I just try to, you know, impart upon the student that what you wanna do, we're here, we're here to support you, just have a plan, you know? Um cause we we have had students that graduated from here and then took over the family farm. And they're, you know, they're a vital part of our our community being that we're of a rural um heritage here. So I I I really try to make it clear to the student that um it's all important.
Dennis.
Does you have a question?
Well, the question I had kinda dealt with this discussion about the seventy-eight percent of the class planning to attend college. You know, I can't remember how many years ago this was, but I can remember uh that at one time. That percentage was a very much lower number, can can you kinda fill me in on a little bit on? How that's progressed through the years?
I think, uh you know, a lot of it are some of the things that, you know, we've done over probably the last four or five years in terms of. Um starting to have more discussions with kids about the future, having more, um we we kicked off some Naviance lessons. So this would go back five years ago, cause I was still in the classroom, um and we were doing these Naviance lessons about. Future and career clusters and things like that, and part of one of the things we did with all the kids that year. Their their career cluster then had another thing that said, well, if you're interested in this, here are the colleges you wanna go to. And some of the kids were like amazed, like we had one kid who looked at it and video game programmer was a profession, and it listed some colleges. And of course, he went to college and then he was working on um one of those games that the kids all loved Fortnite. Um that they were all into a couple of years ago, and so he was part of Chris's program, great kid, and you know, just those kinda things were like, when they first saw it, they were like, wait. I can do this, and I can like look into college in order to do that, so I think for some of them, we had a couple of kids who who realized that like cybersecurity was a thing five years ago. Um and we're like, oh, thi- this college offers that, um and so we've seen the last couple of years, uh Chris's program with cybersecurity, what do we have, last year? Two or three kids were looking to go to college for that?
Maybe three, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, and then a big one that's come up for us recently is the medical field, and so there's been a lot of kids who, you know, have started to look into that, so I think that's part of it. Where some of the kids see the, you know, further education, I might be able to get into these different types of professions, and I think also. You know, obviously, starting early college and having more talk about it, having kids take classes, we've heard from a lot of the kids who were like, I didn't think I could do this. But I was pretty successful, maybe I wanna think about this, and we heard that from like five or six kids who. You know, when they first heard that they were gonna take an English level college class, were like, I wanna know part of this. And then halfway through the semester, I'd run into kids in the hall and they'd be like, the college class is is really hard, but I'm kinda glad I did it because I'm doing pretty well. And you know, we had, uh Lou and I talked about the other day, we had two or three kids who were like adamant, colleges and for me, who are considering it, one of which who listed. One of the schools that um they wanna try to go to, you know, a two-year college, and was like, yeah, I wanna do this. Um so I I think that's part of where we're seeing the numbers, um you know, I I mean, we'll see as we go, you know? Again, it's trying to give kids as many opportunities to whatever they wanna do in the future, um. Yeah, I I think it's all exciting because, you know, we've we've had some military kids who um. Wanted to start in the military, but talk about, you know, I wanna take college classes at some point, or through the military while I'm there, I'd like to do this, and. And we've had a couple of our kids who are doing that now, who keep, you know, you read about them in the paper sometimes, they keep getting these advanced degrees while they're in the military. Um so I think for, we're trying to get our kids to to know that, you know, you have a lot of options, consider them all before you make a decision. And even when you make that decision, you're not locked into that decision, you know, you can pivot from where you go. Which I think is helpful.
We had a student this year who um impressed the recruiter that we had at the career in like. He he wants this particular student to go through officer training.
Yeah, I mean, that recruiter was great, he he mentioned that, hey, if you ever need me to come in and give the ASFAT test, I'd be happy to. We happened to have a kid who didn't take it, and another student who wanted to take it and then decided not to, and so we offered it up to them again, and. He came and gave them the test after the fact, so you know, just things like that, I think, uh you know, it's been really helpful, yeah.
I have more things up, there's these two of those students that are majoring in cybersecurity right now, I made, uh Lou brought us in this program, and I made it aware of the program that. Should UMass be participating in this program, but um there are several colleges throughout the country that have this program, so after their sophomore year of college. They can apply to the Department of Defense, Department of Department of Defense is so desperate for cybersecurity experts. They will pay the last two years of college and twenty-five thousand dollars of living expenses if they agree to work for the government after graduation.
Wow.
Lot, those two kids are aware of that program, maybe they're aware of that program, know exactly who to talk to at those campuses when that time comes.
Great, great, the the follow-up, all right, I just have a really quick one, this was a suggestion from someone in the community. They, the suggestion was that once every quarter. We have a day where students are visiting colleges. They said that um their suggestion was that we take the marshmallow buses. And put together an itinerary so that we have more of our students exposed. To more of the colleges, so that suggestion came from the community.
Okay.
Um as an idea, and I thought it was worth bringing on, but I have to tell you the the difference and hearing the successes, and then. In speaking to a number of kids who graduated this year at different gatherings. It was a much more educated decision in terms of, I mean, I asked them typically the same questions. Where did you apply, why did you apply there, and you you know, what the decision? And then from a conversations I've been having with some parents, only cause I know this firsthand. This is the perfect time to be going back to financial aid offices and asking for more money. Because a lot of the financial aid offices have allocated a certain amount. Maybe they didn't get the students that they had put aside money for, and they give out that money. And I know because it made the difference for my niece going to graduate school at Columbia. As opposed to the City University of New York, we went into financial aid office. And they gave us a much better package than she was originally, and this is the time of the year for them to do it.
Absolutely.
So you might wanna give parents that heads up, and it was a subs- in my niece's case, it was a subs- it was enough to make a real difference. And to go there, David.
Um, I just had one question, the student who is going into the Marine Corps, is that the student who was uh asked to be an officer candidate, or?
That's a different student, yeah.
Okay, well, we really appreciate this, thank you for all the work on it, and. Again, remember, you know, like Carl's comment, we're here to help.
Thank you, thank you.
And thanks for all the work.
Thank you, Jess.
Yeah. Okay, summer meeting scheduled, we had originally put aside the twenty-ninth for the first one.
So if you take a look at, uh Lynette tried to do a chart.
Ah.
It should be in your packet, and just give me a minute to figure out which end is up here. Um so, I believe it's at the, on uh.
Twelve C.
Thank you, but right behind the twenty-two of Jesse's and Lou's report, so um you can see. Um the proposed dates and uh and where we are, kind of with uh the number of people who. Said they were able to attend, um so. We did have a a a an ask if um we could go as close uh either the end of June or beginning of July to wrap up the potential solar. Project, I don't know if you have anything else that you as a committee feel um we need to address. Earlier in the year. No, I'm just saying if there's other things that, you know, on the agenda that people need to, that. Would consider whether or not you want a June twenty-ninth, you want, you want a June twenty-ninth and a July sixth, or you want one July, one August, you know, what what are people thinking about?
I I'm actually, no, for the last.
Okay, so.
Me too.
Everything else is.
Is that new, because people put things in?
I think I said no before, but um from July first to tenth, I'm not available.
So Kim is a no.
Okay, that's, that's fine.
And. Kyle is a no.
So now we are at three noes.
Okay, so it looks like.
June twenty-ninth.
The twenty-ninth.
I like the twenty-ninth.
Yeah, I'm a yes for that, and Kim is a yes for that. For the twenty-ninth.
Okay.
So you think the solar will be ready by then?
Uh yes, definitely, she thought it would, uh she thought it would be completely like language intact, so that might be the best time to do that.
Okay, so given that except for David, we definitely would have. Um a qu- a quorum, maybe we should do the twenty-ninth, and why don't we tentatively set. um a qu- a quorum, maybe we should do the twenty-ninth and why don't we tentatively set
And do August tenth.
I was gonna say the August, the August tenth.
That we can eliminate two two of those dates right now as possibilities. The two, the two that have uh July twentieth and August twenty-four, both have five yeses, that's not a quorum. So we can
Yes, exactly. And even if I could
De-list those two days.
Well, we have two people who haven't said, who haven't answered.
Right. I answered, I don't know. I guess I never sent it.
Oh, right, that's true.
Okay.
So I'm saying that we technically could have a quorum in uh in July twentieth.
You could do August tenth.
Yes, but not the twenty-fourth cuz we usually go away at the end of summer.
And that's usually when I'm away. So the tenth is a possibility. Okay, so one, two, three, four, right. Um
Of August?
Yes.
So we have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight yeses. And one, two, noes. Alright, um, so the twenty-ninth is a definite. And I don't think we need a meeting right afterwards on the sixth.
Yeah, alright, get rid of it.
So we'll eliminate that. What did you say about July twentieth?
Kim, uh, that I don't know.
Okay, so that's a question mark. Alright.
Are you a yes, Bonnie, or no?
I, yes, I'm a yes. So we have one, two, three, four, five, six.
We have six. So you'd have a quorum and be tight.
Yeah, be tight. Um, well, we have more on the on August tenth, so.
So I'm just saying it it's okay, but that we have no date in July. And then usually we try to pull one.
Yeah, exactly.
Just saying. Um
But we usually have one at the end of June.
We usually do, actually, because
Yeah, we usually do because the evaluation.
Notice I'm not saying anything, but um
Right.
But, you know, the so there's usually one in there, but and then there's usually one July date and at least one.
Would I be able to do it via Zoom?
You could do it via Zoom on the twentieth?
Yes.
I can probably do it via Zoom.
Okay, so that would be a Zoom.
Which is still a yes.
But still a yes, that's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven yeses for the twentieth. Alright, um, so what about the the July twentieth and August tenth?
Let me just see something here. I am not.
What, what did you say?
I'm I am on the
I thought she was application August tenth.
The week before.
Checking.
Mm-hmm. Um so if neither the tenth or the twenty-fourth is a seventeenth worse, if we went to August seventeenth instead of the week in between, there's one week in between.
August seventeenth? That would be better cuz I'm usually gone the um the the August twenty-fourth period.
So how many re- meetings are we scheduled?
You need to sched- usually you schedule at least once a month. So you have the end of June, you have one potential in July, and then you'd have
I can guarantee any on the seventeenth.
On August seventeenth?
Anybody?
Nope.
I'd have to
August seventeenth?
Yeah.
I don't know.
We usually go from August, like right around that time to the twentieth.
I I was just trying to make an option between the tenth and the twenty-fourth cuz also
Okay, August seventeenth, let's go. Jim, can you do it?
Yeah.
Okay, Kyle?
Yes.
Carl?
Dennis? That is only around, August seventeenth?
Try, try the dates again.
August seventeenth.
August seventeenth? Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, good.
I'm a maybe, I have to check.
Alright, David?
I don't know, I'll have to look at things.
Okay, so I'm putting in question mark.
Art?
I don't know either.
And Bonnie, I can.
I don't know, we usually are gone that week. That's our our week, we start our real seventeen eighth before we go through the twenty.
Okay. Sarah?
I'm not, I have to check my dates and maybe
Okay, so will the maybes please check? Right now we have one, two, three, four, five. We only have five right now who say yes. Four, five, so eight, seventeen.
Five, can you? What?
August seventeenth, check on your availability.
No, he's okay, but
Dennis, Dennis said okay.
You said yes.
Yeah.
What, no, I thought you said the fifteenth.
No, no, seventeen.
No, seventeen.
The seventeenth of August.
No, one, one, no.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, good. Alright, so David are
But you killed the tenth, right?
No, we haven't killed anything in August yet.
We haven't killed anything. So um Sarah, Kim, Art, and David will check their calendars and we'll wait for
At least we have June and July, so
Alright, so we have the June one as a yes and we have July twentieth as a yes.
Okay.
So we're at least up to that. Okay. Moving along. June twentieth, community conversation.
Well, we already talked about
Yeah, I think we have it. The only thing that we would have to do is um entertain a motion
Oh.
that the school committee is um is a partner in this or is acting as a co-conspirator, co um presenter.
Uh, I I I move that the uh community conversation uh coming up uh
Yes.
is uh well, June twentieth next week uh be posted uh as a meeting by bo- by the school committee. I can't move on behalf of the regional
Right.
school district.
Okay. Com- alright, so the motion is I moved up the community conversation set for six twenty. Be, not, give me your term again?
Posted, school committee.
Posted.
Posted as an open meeting
Posted.
Of of the SBRST.
As an open meeting of the SBRST school committee. Do we have a second for that?
Second.
Okay, um, I think that was Jim I got first. Any discussion? Seeing none, let's vote. Starting over there, Jim?
Yes.
Kyle?
Yes.
Carl? Dennis?
Yes.
Davis? Art?
Yes.
Me, yes. Kim?
Yes.
Sarah, yes. Okay, so that's it, we can now post it. Alright, moving along happily. Well, unfinished business, do we have anything?
No.
Okay, fi- subcommittee reports, Sarah?
No updates.
Okay, um, community relations, public school advocacy, Nancy is not here. Um, she's dealing with a family emergency. Um I think by the action we just took to be co-sponsors, bless you, we covered
Thank you.
That, and I think the reports on the fact that the when we're doing the n- news letter covers everything that would have been under that.
Okay, great, so we're fine with that. Dennis, all the first reads.
Uh, I don't have any of them with me.
They're in They're in the packet.
They weren't in my packet.
Oh, I thought they were. Wait a second, maybe I'm wrong.
But it's first read anyway.
Oh, yes, they are, in the packet.
It's their first read anyway.
First read, starting right after the chart with the s- with the meeting dates. So the first reads, so
Yep, fourteen C, Dennis.
Yes.
Page fourteen C.
So we don't really have to do anything except go home and read those, correct?
Uh, the
Wait, let 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 me make sure Dennis is okay.
The only ones I see in here are were the the couple that I had in my stuff, which was only like two of them.
No.
Not that whole list.
No, we did five, that name.
Yeah, it's, there's one, two, three, four, five.
I think there was it, yeah.
Six.
Some are removals.
So they're all in here, Dennis.
Uh, Madam Chair, I have a question for you. Uh, is it appropriate, I think it is, but I'm not sure, there isn't really answer.
Seven. Yes. I touted.
Okay, well, no, it's You're gonna uh reward my confidence and your knowledge of this. Uh, is it appropriate for for a a a member of the school committee to move that the first read, that that all of the policies included in the packet be deemed to have have had a first reading without
Absolutely.
Okay, so I make that motion.
Okay, do we have a second on that?
I'll second it.
Okay, we got that from Art. So there's no need for discussion on this. Um, we will all read all of these at home, all of them are in the packet.
No, we're gonna vote on them.
Well, yes.
He's saying skip, if we're okay with the
We're skipping the first read, we're voting
Oh, skipping the first read.
We're ready to vote. Based on these, the recommendation of the policy committee.
Right, right.
Oh, the policy committee recommended that?
Yes.
Well, that's what your, his motion is.
Okay.
He's saying, can I, can I do that?
The motion was simply to have deemed that the school committee deems to have had a first reading of these without actually having them read. And I thank God for reminding the rest of us that we do have to take a vote on that motion.
Yes, okay. So um
No, they're just gonna vote on that motion.
The motion of s- um, we have deemed that we have had a first read.
Correct.
Correct.
And that's the first motion. Okay.
Correct.
I'm waiting for Dennis to feel comfortable with it. Okay, let's take a vote in the interim. This is a motion to make it that we have uh, we're approving that a first read based on the recommendation of the policy subcommittee has taken place for all of us. Let's start, Sarah.
I haven't had an opportunity to read them.
No, not, none of them. We're taking the recommendation
Of the policy
Of the policy subcommittee.
Okay, no. We can just leave it at that. Okay.
Bonnie, what what morally happens is they take it home and read
Right, I know that.
He he made a different motion.
Yeah, we know this, Dennis.
The next time around.
Mm-hmm.
Carl made a different motion.
Right, so we could vote against it, alright.
No.
Okay.
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Dennis, you prefer we read it. Take it home, read it. So you're a no on this?
Uh I'm a no.
Yes.
Okay. Okay.
Yes.
Alright, so
Now you have to count that way.
Now I have to count.
Well, you have
No, we also have to vote.
No.
Well, she's trying to decide.
That's two.
Yes.
No, that's three noes. Were there any other noes over there?
One abstention.
Three.
Same.
Okay, and the yeses were, just raise your hand if you were a yes.
One, two, three, four, five.
She didn't vote.
I didn't vote.
She didn't vote.
So four.
There's four yeses.
Okay, four yeses. I'm actually a no.
Four noes.
Or
We wouldn't have enough anyway.
No, we don't have enough anymore.
Okay.
Okay.
Alright, so in that case, yes.
Well, I I think we need to go back and look at our bylaws because I'm pretty sure that there's something in our bylaws that say we have a first read and then vote on it the next time.
That's exact, by turning down this motion.
Yes. That's true.
That's how we've always done it.
Yes.
Right.
You're right.
Whether it's spelled out in in our bylaws or not, I don't know.
The, it's not, in this case, Dennis, it really isn't a problem because we just turned down the motion to go to directly to a vote. So we will be doing exactly what you wanted. Art?
We have in the past, very rare occasions, waived the first read and voted on the, on the, on the uh
Pause in.
Policies.
Yes, okay.
So what you're telling me is that we would have to have a motion first to waive the first read.
That's what we
Right, and that's what
That's what just, that's what we just did.
That's like our opinion, we all vote it now. Oh, well, four of us would.
First
And it was rejected.
It's rejected, so.
Okay.
Okay.
Back to normal.
So back to normal.
Back to normal.
Okay, alright. Back. Okay, let's move along. Okay, um, personnel and negotiations, do you want to say anything regarding?
No.
Okay, we have nothing to report. Art, buildings and grounds.
Yeah, why I didn't get
Nope.
Voting.
Okay, Jim?
Uh, we, I was Assistant gathering information and sure very like, and we'll have something for the committee by the twenty.
For the twenty-ninth. Just so for those of you who don't know, I went over this with Jim. What happens is there's a draft report that's prepared by this subcommittee and Jim's done a great first stab at it. Um, and then we have to meet with Beth and present the report to her and she's able to comment if there's anything changes, et cetera. And that is done um as a subcommittee meeting. And then after that, the whatever version of the report is approved, Jim will be bringing to the full school committee on the twenty-ninth
Right.
for a vote. And even though it's just one little computer poking um a result for the evaluation, it very often, because it's a public document, is picked up by the newspapers. So um, we wanna make sure that we have a careful evaluation there. Alright, and thank you, Jim, for all of that. Um, executive minutes review, our favorite thing, Carl, where are we?
Right, well, I, I believe that uh following several discussions from a very efficient and diligent Lynette
Ah, she is.
That we do not have any executive session minutes that not, that have not been reviewed except for the last one. And that clearly is is not ready to be approved because we
Exactly.
Something still in progress. So I think I, it appears that there are no outstanding executive minutes with that one exception, that have not been read and either uh approved or disapproved, so.
Oh, right.
So 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 we're resolved until that that matter has been uh, that contract, whether it happens or not.
Attuned, yeah, right.
And and presumably that's gonna happen within a very short time.
Okay, curriculum subcommittee, um, we haven't met again. Julie, I hope we can do it on a more regular basis cuz we learned a lot. Instead of it in, you know, in intensive
We can make a plan for an atmosphere.
Make a plan, I like it. Alright, um, liaison, we, okay. Southern Burks here, childcare, nothing to report. Um, regional agreement review, nothing at this point, future agenda items, Beth.
Future agenda items, Beth, I'm the future agenda item. Um, so I did speak with um the business office today. We are still, there is quite a backlog in audits due to um, the pandemic and the all the federal monies that, it's it's really shocking, actually. So um, we are in, we're in the queue, but we're still back on on uh FY twenty-one, believe it or not. So that'll be starting twenty-two and, you know, we're going into twenty-four. It's 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 a real problem, but we have a limited number of people who are able to do that and they're um moving as quickly as they can.
Okay, which again reminds me of a tangential. Um, the ARPA money.
Mm-hmm.
Sheffield is now has a um guidelines for a proposal for asking for money. There are hundreds of thousands of dollars. Um, I don't know if we might wanna look at it.
We sure do.
It has, it it is now, um it's now supposedly posted, so we can, the proposals are due by September.
Oh, we have a lot of free time, we can think about how to.
Yes. But yeah, I think maybe the
At least it's not due the whole world.
Well. Okay, yeah, I think we definitely should take um, a look and, and think about ways that we could. Yes.
Yes, um, and it's a lot of money and we should be in that pool.
Okay.
Okay, collaboration with other districts, um. We don't have anything new there. Guess what, it's not eight o'clock and I will entertain a motion. Carl?
Uh, it would be premature for one reason, uh, adjourned. Uh, the SB RSD twenty-three, twenty-four school committee calendar. Which we approved at our last meeting, has a school committee meeting scheduled for August tenth. We haven't decided that yet, based on the, our discussion earlier this evening.
Correct.
Right, this will be modified, this was a draft of potentials and then we, when we shared that. We wanted to revisit the summer schedule, so this will be modified with the choices we've made.
Okay, so I moved to adjourn.
And I'll take a second on that.
A second.
Uh, and seeing, seeing no objections, we're adjourned.